I'm gonna call the Springfield City Council Work Session to order with the local.
Mayor Bean Gordon.
Here.
Concerns Weber, here, Smo.
Here.
Bradley, here, Doyle, here, and Cisionary.
Here, thank you.
All right, we've got lots of meetings tonight. For the work session, we only have two items, which first one is update on implementation of the climate-friendly and equitable communities role-making process. Hi Sandy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sandy Dawson, but before I get started, I'm gonna ask Christine Anderson to give you a quick update.
And I apologize that I'm sitting behind most of you. Christina Kraus, Assistant City Attorney's Office, just wanted to update you that we are still in the, sorry.
You want to come to the table?
There's a whole chair right next to you.
Sorry about that. We are still litigating these rules. For those of you that were not on the council when the litigation began in late 2022, we are asking the Court of Appeals to review the legality of the rules and the way they were adopted. That work, litigation is still underway. We should be done with briefing by the end of April, and we would really hope for a decision sometime in 2023 from the Court of Appeals. It's being reviewed in expedited process, but we don't really know what the outward timeline is on when they could issue a decision. So all of that to say, the advice that you continue to figure out how to implement them with the dates provided in the rules still stands. There's no.
And I believe in April, don't you have, aren't you bringing this back in executive session? Maybe not, maybe I'm remembering wrong.
I will bring it back in an executive session once we have more information on the briefing, but I don't have a date exactly set.
So that's my nice way to say that, you know, we'll get an opportunity to talk specifically about the litigation, not tonight, not here, coming up.
Right, well, thank you. I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager, and helping me on this project are Sophie McKinley with Parking, Molly Markarian with the Climate Friendly Areas, and Drew Larson with the Scenario Planning. So there are four topics and two questions tonight. And Christina's stepping over.
I don't think you're leaving.
So these rules include a wide-ranging set of requirements for metropolitan areas, and the city is mandated to comply with the rules that affect community engagement, land use, and transportation. The CFAC rules aim to reduce carbon emitted by vehicles and then to increase equity during community engagement and when providing housing and transportation choices. The CFAC rules are broad-reaching and complex. They are changing the basis for land use and transportation in the metropolitan areas of Oregon. It's too early still to fully understand the full implications and effectiveness of the rules. Comprehensive planning staff are working to implement these, and we're gonna start off with the first topic on parking. So Phase One of the parking rules is in effect. That went into effect at the end of December, and in that phase, we are requiring no onsite parking within half a mile of the MX, around 11, and for certain housing and some other types of uses. At the end of March, we will be requiring additional conduit for electric vehicles for multifamily housing so that forty percent of the spaces have that conduit to support electric charging. Last fall in work session, council gave direction for Phase Two of the parking, and council directed that we move forward with eliminating parking minimums citywide. So at the end of the year, we had that information out to the public. We then requested an extension from DLCD, which they granted, the Department of Land Conservation and Development is DLCD. And so we have until the end of this year, 2023, to actually implement Phase Two of the parking requirements. So when I was before council last fall, a lot of, couple times, a lot of discussion around accessible parking and ADA compliance. And so we did some more research on that, and what we have learned is that in order to require any ADA parking spaces, if the developer is not going to otherwise provide parking onsite, then we need to adopt that requirement into our development code. So under ADA and Oregon State law, if there is no off-street parking spaces provided for the general population, then you don't need to provide any spaces. So my first question for you tonight is, should Springfield include a requirement for one ADA parking space when no onsite parking is otherwise provided as part of the package of code amendments that are required to comply with the parking requirements? So should I continue or you wanna?
Are you guys ready to discuss this item, or you guys wanna go through all the questions and then circle back?
Isn't that a federal FDA requirement?
You only needed to provide ADA parking if you're providing parking at all. You're not providing any parking, then you don't need to provide ADA. So the question is, I mean, unless we adopt something into our code, then we could require one space.
So, all right, any, any other, I guess, comments or opinions here? Joe?
Well, it sounds pretty heartless, but if the state doesn't care, then I don't see us requiring that because that would be hugely onerous on every single thing we have developed from here on forward. And where's the percentage of use or the potential of the percentage of use of those spots? How often are ADA spots taken, or what percentage of the time? And is that a good use of the property? And I would say, well, if we're gonna have dense housing, we need to have room for the footprint of a building, so it's very sad, really sad. But if there's not a state requirement, then I don't see how we should be requiring things of builders, and we don't have that requirement to do so, just like many other things, we don't require, we don't, we should not be requiring things that is not already required by higher entity. Be more restrictive than the state. That's my opinion.
So, okay, so if the rule is, if we implied, if we, if, if, under the new rules, if they provided onsite parking based on the developer, then, then the ADA requirement's gonna kick in. So we're really only talking about the scenario that, that developers provided no, no onsite parking, whether or not we want one, want one spot hanging out there. I think that would be, that might be impossible to manage, you've got one spot sort of hanging out in front of, you know, in front of folks, and then without really clear direction on what to do, and, like, yeah.
They're not gonna be able to force it, probably gonna keep people off of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is not your final decision. There would be a public hearing process with planning commission and council before you actually adopt the amendments, but just looking for your direction as to what to include in those amendments.
Yeah. Anybody else have opinions here?
I agree with your guys' assessment.
So my question is that if someone who is disabled or in need of that spot, and a developer creates, it sounds like a multifamily housing, and they don't put any parking spots in, then if there's any legal stuff, it would go between them and the developer, it would involve the city, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, in, so aren't there some ADA spots on street in downtown?
Yes, we have a parking management plan in downtown.
Okay, keep, keep going.
Yeah, currently, we don't require onsite parking in downtown, and we do have a parking management plan, and so the city does provide onsite, I mean, on-street ADA parking. And, all right, we've discussed this to, and the thought is that we would probably not provide ADA parking on a request basis. That could get problematic. If there were areas where we wanted to develop another parking management plan, like Bunwood, for example, if there was the need to do that, then we would incorporate that type of ADA aspect to the on-street parking, public parking.
Okay, thanks for the clarification there, Joe. So I'm curious, then,
it doesn't sound as though we're required, or we're required to place ADA compliant parking downtown, correct?
I think we are, but I'll look to Joe.
Yeah, if we have a managed parking plan like downtown, we're required to have a certain number of spaces per, per block.
So that's street parking as opposed to parking lot?
Correct.
So anytime a entity has got a parking plan, we have, there's a requirement for having ADA compliant spots.
So I think if you're on private property, if they put parking, they have to meet the requirements for the number of stalls per spaces they replace on their property. In our managed parking plan, within the right-of-way, we're required to have so many spaces. And we haven't fully implemented the downtown ADA spots yet, but we have started putting these spots in.
And so, if you try to recall, the state statute, at least my memory of it, indicates that the places that are accessible to the public or open to the public, if an ADA spot is not required unless there's at least twenty-five spaces for parking. Did that go away?
I don't know what the number is, but I know there's a minimum. Just because you only require, provide, say, ten spaces, doesn't mean you're absolved of any ADA spaces. It might only be one space.
Right, I see, but there was a state statute that indicated that you have to have at least one ADA compliant spot for every twenty-five spots.
I think on-screen, we're like two per twenty-five.
The state statute now, I don't know what it was or when it changed, but the statute now that sets out that table is one ADA space for the first twenty-five.
The first twenty-five.
And then it goes up and more ADA spaces for more parking spaces after that. And then at some point, it gets to a formula where you use.
Gotcha, it was, it was twenty-five.
And then I think it's like two per block or something. It works out to about two per block perimeter downtown, and I don't remember if that was a based off of a number, or just how it applied to Springfield when we calculated it out. But the on-street parking is, we have adopted the, or the council, I guess, through the standard specifications, has adopted the public right-of-way applicability guidelines of the standard that we use to show ADA compliance in the public right-of-way. A tricky area because the state hasn't adopted really clear guidelines, so to keep from having to have, you know, the city engineer interpret everything, we use the, it's called the PROAG standards, and that's where that on-street parking. So it's just a different regulatory mechanism than I bet parking lots.
It, it just is, gets bothersome if people, residents of cities start doing things voluntarily, and then we get locked into past practice. And that's where, I don't want us to, I don't want the city to get it into that position, and that, we'll have to figure out if we're already in that position.
Yeah, and I think where Sandy was mentioning, so we're required in downtown because we have a managed parking plan that we have to have ADA spaces because we do manage parking. Outside in other neighborhoods, where we don't have managed parking, our plan was not to put ADA spots in. So even if a developer were to develop multifamily housing, put no parking in, we were not planning on because we don't have managed parking spaces, much like you're saying, we're not required to maintain ADA parking spaces. We would not recommend putting ADA parking spaces out there.
Pretty confident this will come up later.
Okay, so I'm hearing move it forward without an ADA requirement in it?
Makes me sad because I grew up with a mother that was disabled, and I remember so many times where we would go places, and she either couldn't go, or we would have to carry her up with her wheelchair to get her in places. They didn't, there was no requirements. We finally feel like we moved to a place where people are disabled, have the ability to have bathrooms that they can get into and things like that, and it just kind of seems like a step backwards that with housing, and I don't know that they thought about that when they were trying to think about this stuff.
And to me, it's people that pass these type of measures that force cities, enforce people that need assistance, whatnot, they don't, they don't have zero forethought, and they're thinking about something that's three feet, or three, three inches above them, and here's what people have to pay, and this is where the agencies or entities have to pay because legislators are short-sightedness.
Okay, let's keep going because it's, we have a lot of opinions about CFAC rules, so.
The next, the next topic is climate-friendly areas, and I don't have a particular question about that, so I'm just gonna hit on some high points. So we are required to designate climate-friendly areas defined as areas where people can meet most of their daily needs without having to drive. These areas are intended to become urban mixed-use areas that contain greater-than-average mix and supply of housing, jobs, businesses, and services, and a higher intensity of development. The rules outline a two-phase process that includes technical analysis and community engagement for local governments. So the first phase is a study, and for that, we study and identify potential locations for climate-friendly areas, and we need to have that done by the end of this calendar year. And then the second phase is to adopt the applicable development standards and plan amendments to actually implement the climate-friendly areas. So the, there is funding for a consultant to help us with the outreach, and that's Kearns and West. They've been interviewing community leaders of underserved populations to better understand their context and help elevate historically underrepresented communities to inform decision-making and approaches for mitigating possible displacement, both as part of the climate-friendly areas work as well as future planning and transportation projects. So in your pocket, I've listed the interview participants thus far. There are still gonna be a couple more, and then some of the key findings that we had from that engagement. We are going to request an extension on the implementation for the climate-friendly areas as part of the broader schedule that I'm gonna get to later, so that that would better align with our housing capacity analysis that is required that we get that done by the end of 2026. Any questions? If not, I'll just move on to scenario planning.
I've got a couple of questions here. So consultant is working, is on track with Elcod, right?
No, with, yeah, with DLCD.
Okay, so what's the, what are the other groups that they're gonna interview?
We've been trying to reach some groups without success, especially in the Hispanic Latino communities. I think they're still trying to reach out to Beto School District, and I'm not sure who else they're still trying to get a hold of.
So when it comes to identifying climate-friendly areas, is, I guess, when I read this, I thought, let me think about my question here. Are, is this the only public outreach we're doing, is the way that CFAC is set up, you know, only sort of to talk to underserved communities?
No, I mean, this is the initial stage because we want to take that into consideration as we develop our engagement plan, but we don't have our engagement plan prepared as of yet.
Okay, so, okay, so these interview, these interviews are gonna sort of inform our actual public engagement plan, the public engagement plan's gonna, you know, be the broad net, okay, okay, but and what is the possibility that, that old nodal areas are gonna turn back into climate-friendly areas?
Pretty high. Yeah, I mean, that's where we're looking first because that's, the climate-friendly areas are pretty much the same type of policy direction as our notable development areas, and so we're looking at those first because that would be the least amount of change in that people, that's what they've been planning for, that's what they're expecting. So we're asking Elcod to analyze those areas first and see what capacity they have and any other kind of constraints, and use that as the starting point.
Steve, I'm looking at the city center. It's gonna have that population there for itself, and it runs all over.
Anybody else? All right, I'm sure this will be completely different because they're not nodal areas, they're climate-friendly areas now. I can, all right, let's keep going.
All right, so scenario planning, and this one does include a question for you. So the purpose of the Division Forty-four Metropolitan Greenhouse Gas Reduction Targets Components of the CFAC rules is to significantly and as rapidly as possible reduce climate pollutants that are causing climate disruption. So this division requires that cities and counties within a metropolitan area prepare a transportation and land use scenario plan that defines and implements a preferred scenario, identifies performance measures for tracking progress, particularly around greenhouse gas emission, and works to not only avoid or mitigate any impacts to underserved populations, but to improve outcomes for these communities over time. So in our area, Central Lane County, we completed a scenario plan in 2015. So in recognition of the work that's already been done, the rules are written that allow this area to build on that preferred scenario from 2015 rather than start over and create a new scenario plan. So within the rules, there are some different components of what we're required to come up with by the end of June. So these include a work program for implementing the preferred scenario plan that includes a governance structure, a proposed governance structure, scope of work, a community engagement plan, funding estimate, and a proposed schedule. So the governance structure is where I'm looking for your guidance. So this governance structure, in our case, since we already have a scenario plan that we're working from, would be providing guidance in the performance measures and setting the target outcomes that we'd like to have. So we've been talking about how likely we would have performance measures that would work regionally, and then each jurisdiction would set targets relative to what makes sense for each jurisdiction. And then this governance structure would also be overseeing implementation and reviewing work done by the jurisdictions that's working towards those targets. So there are a couple of options that we've talked about that seem to make sense for our area, and one is to make use of the existing Metropolitan Policy Committee. So within the existing structure, there are bylaws that allow for consideration of metropolitan transportation matters that are not part of the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is a federal arm, particularly around federal funding. And in that configuration, they add LTD, Lane Transit District members as voting members. I should say that we're not really sure about Coburg yet, so under the rules, Coburg could apply to be exempt and not have to participate. They have not yet, and we haven't had that conversation with Coburg about whether they want to be involved in the scenario planning or not. It's really up to them, but we'll be talking with them this spring to see what their thoughts are, and that would inform whether they would be at the table as part of this governance structure or not. If you didn't want to do, use the existing Metropolitan Policy Committee, we could create a new intergovernmental entity that would be based on some type of a agreement between the local governments and have some role for Lane Transit District. So the question for council, and again, this is not a final decision, we're just looking to put forward a proposed governance structure that we would submit as part of this work plan to DLCD. So what is council's preference for governance structure for regional cooperation with regards to scenario planning?
Before we answer that, I just wanted to point out a clarification of the materials. Are you, it's saying here that this work program is due to DLCD by June thirtieth of this year? For context.
All right, Cory.
So that leads to my question that isn't really, I just wanna clarify it out loud. So there is, there is no funding for all of this work, right? Like, there's, there's no, like, we need you to create this thing, we need your staff to do this stuff, and here's this money that's gonna help you pay for that sometimes, right?
Maybe funding thus far has gone to Elcod and the consultants. There's no money identified that comes out.
Okay. What happens if we don't hit this deadline?
The, the June deadline?
Yeah, I mean, that's crazy and vicious.
I don't know about that particular deadline, what the ramifications are.
The June deadline is for submitting the plan for how we're gonna address the things, not for addressing all of the things. I think we can amend it. I think what we probably would do is submit an incomplete plan, and then staff would come back, the LTD staff would come back and tell us to fix it. That's what I would guess. Generally, if we don't comply with this division rules, we face for the rules, unacknowledgement of our existing transportation system plan, which could put federal funding for projects in jeopardy, also a written tattle letter on us to the state Federal Highway Administration and the ODOT. The federal and state entity is saying we're not complying with their rules, and they shouldn't give us funding as well. So we've written in some penalties if we don't, if we generally miss the, the targets for reporting to them on time.
Cory.
And then my follow-up is, if I'm understanding this correctly, we can say what we think should happen, but this is an agreement between Eugene and Lane County, so we are not the ultimate decision-makers about whatever this governing body becomes?
Well, you're one of them, I bet you're not the only one.
So what would, what's the decision-making process for them? Like, we put forward what we think you all should do, but then what event, how eventually do we come to a decision and who gets to decide?
Well, I'm hoping that we all have the same answer. If we don't, then we'll have to figure out how we make that decision.
Steve, I'd be like to form a new organization to do that.
I mean, that isn't, that is responsibility.
Just another thing for us to do.
Right, which is why, I mean, I guess my thought is we already have MPC in place, let's just use it as the structure that it is. To me, that's the easy answer, but I don't know how you all feel about that.
Well, okay, so the, I guess the questions that I have are, when you look at, like, MPC is definitely the way we need to go, right? We don't need to reinvent the wheel. But under this sort of secondary, hey, can you consider rules of, of a regional nature, and when you throw LTD in it, is our, like, the way I read MPC is we would still have, everybody would still have a veto on each other, right? Which is what sort of keeps us all together. Is that the way that the staff is reading the MPC bylaws, is that when we consider these sort of other regional topics outside of the MPO, that that veto rule still is in place?
Um, I think so, but I'm looking to see, because I don't know this all that well.
Wouldn't, I wouldn't think they would put voting rules in a measure, we're gonna rule.
Well, I'm looking at the MPC bylaws in terms of what.
Yeah, when anything confronts the other, they don't like it.
Yeah, I mean, I know that that's true in a certain, one configuration of MPC.
I think I read it somewhere, I could be mistaken, but I think I read in there somewhere that the, the voting requirement required that one of, one member from each body was available to vote, at least in that.
Correct, but that's under the MPO sort of traditional, like, federal rules. This is under some obscure, hey, you can do other duties as assigned. And I don't think we're gonna solve it tonight, but, you know, I, MPC's the way I would prefer to do it. And also, I think our going position should be, make sure everybody understands that that veto rule still applies to whatever this new scenario plan, right? Like, so actively verify that that is true when we sort of all shake hands here, because I think it's important, especially if you're bringing LTD into the mix. The other question that I have is if Coburg knocked out, what's happening with Junction City?
They're not in the MPO, and it's not looking like they will be this round.
Got it.
I, I don't know that that decision's been finalized, but based on the census numbers, it's looking like Junction City will not.
It, it's still gonna be out.
Right. So I'm looking at the bylaws, Article Four, under the names, Section Four, Paragraph D, and it says, "All formal actions shall require the votes of at least a simple majority of the core present, present, and affirmative vote of at least one elected representative from Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County."
So we, we are saying that we are good?
Yes. I will confirm that, you know, with the other staff, making sure it's their understanding and take forth that that's a critical piece of whatever this governance structure does turn out to be, if it's different than the MPO or MPC. All these alphabet suits. Any other thoughts on that?
Victoria?
Well, I'm just curious about the LTD portion of that, because it's saying that.
Well, I'm just curious about the LTD portion of that, because it's saying that they'll have two members. It says, the bylaws state that Board of Lane Transit will appoint. We, we, are they on board with that? Like, do they know?
Yes, they do.
Are we sort of insane?
They've been on it for a long time.
They do, our two members. That's what I was curious about. Thank you.
I think we're good on the governance structure.
All right, thank you. So the last bit of this is about the alternative dates. So we are putting together a proposal of alternative dates, and not just for scenario planning, but all of the portions of the rules for which we can have some adjustment to the timelines. So this attachment to, which was in your packet last fall, but now has a new column of proposed dates where we've shown where we're going to push some of the dates out. So the Oregon Department of Transportation is providing technical assistance and funding for consultants to help on a lot of the components of the rules. And they are, don't have capacity or funding to help everybody at once. And so they have been working with the different jurisdictions to put them together in terms of this kind of spreadsheet over time, and they have identified the Eugene Springfield area as starting to get funding in two thousand and twenty seven. So given that I'm pushing a lot of the dates out, and I realize I didn't push, I did get them changed in here because we had a couple of meetings last week after I'd written this packet. And so I got the dates changed in this, but I didn't get them changed in here in the memo. So a couple of those dates are actually getting pushed out to two thousand and twenty nine for the performance standards and the scenario plan. There's still a lot of work in the short term. Don't think that that's giving us a lot of extra time. If you look through here, there's still the work on the parking and the climate-friendly areas, and there's a with our housing capacity analysis coming up, and then the housing production strategy and correlating all of that with all of this other transportation work, it's going to be a lot of work. But I just wanted to get this in front of you so you can see what we're thinking about putting together. So we have to compile our dates along with Eugene's and Lane County's and Coburg's if they're involved, and put it together in this sort of regional work program that we submit to DLCD.
And the dates on attachment two are updated?
Well, two thousand and twenty nine is going to be around here, but before we know it. In the packet, you estimated that you needed three full-time staff just to work on CPEC, and I know that we're funding three FTEs out of ARPA funds, right? Would, when, when I look through the two thousand and twenty nine window, is that estimate that we would need to, that we would need to carry three full-time planners just to do CPEC is an ongoing in perpetuity, or is that?
I'm hoping that that's just three people doing the CPEC in perpetuity. But I think, you know, this initial push to get all of this adopted, like, the scenario plan, we only have to do once. We don't have to keep updating that scenario plan. We'll have to monitor progress, report on performance measures, but it's not like we'll have to keep updating the plan. Our transportation plan, we're going to have to keep that current. Our housing needs analysis, those climate-friendly areas, those kind of things, we're going to have to kind of maintain over time. So there'll still be work, but hopefully not three people's worth, once we get a lot of that initial work done. And how much we need sort of in perpetuity, haven't thought about it.
And added in additional requirements coming from the state, you know, this, this year with the housing product.
Yeah, there's more than two.
Now, the question that I, like, under this work plan, like, as we're sort of developing it, when do we get to the planning related to North Gateway?
No.
Yeah, and I think, like, that's the way I read it too, right? Like, and like, as a community, you know, we added those resources specifically, and this is not a knock on Springfield staff, but we added those resources to get other stuff this community needed done, like the industrial land that we, that we brought into the UGV, probably two thousand and sixteen. And we haven't even started that work yet.
We started some of the environmental work there, but not on the transportation side of things, other than getting that memo that you had seen. But I think there's both the capacity issue, but then there's also the rules themselves as, in terms of affecting North Gateway in that. We'd need to update our transportation system plan to add projects for that area. And we can't do that unless we're reducing vehicle miles traveled elsewhere in the urban growth boundary, and that is not obvious as to how we can do that.
All right, like, we could talk about this for a long time, so Steve.
I'm extremely concerned about the continuous unfunding mandates that we keep getting. You need to find some way to help address that somehow. It's just, it's taking people off our staff, taking important things that we do in the city away. I don't know, I've heard that before, but
Okay, anybody else? Did we get you everything you needed, Sandy? Because I think if you got us really going about CPEC, we could.
I did get the guidance I needed. Thank you very much. I will see you next time. Smiling this time, because last time we yelled at her so much, she is not.
It was the transit. We were yelling at the state.
But she had to stand there while we yelled at her.
Thanks, Sandy.
Thanks, Andy.
All right, next item is the master fees and charges CPI with Nick.
Good morning, Mayor, councilors. My first time presenting in front of you, so my name is Nick Riolo. Joined the city just about, what, about six or seven months ago. So I'm the DPW Budget Manager, and here to talk about master fees and charges CPI. So in recent years, staff have been advised to use the Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index for the West Region, Region Size B and C to use the CPI that they've posted. We use the CPI because in the development world, this index is familiar with developers. And it was done to ensure that we did small increases to CPI versus large, you know, keeping things flat and then doing a large increase. As of February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, CPI for this area was six point zero. It's come down a little bit, but it's still fairly high as considered what is the normal range of CPI. Many of the fees that are listed in the master fees and charges are designed to be for cost recovery, and therefore, if we do not keep up, then we fall further and further behind. We are recommended, so if council was to decide, was to not choose six point zero percent, staff would recommend a minimum of five percent CPI increase. This would be to mitigate falling further behind in the cost recovery. I provided a CPI summary table that shows the last three fiscal years. This actually shows the Bureau of Labor Statistics Western Region Size B and C CPI and the council-approved CPI. So for fiscal year twenty-one, the index was two point eight, and we kept that flat at zero. Fiscal year twenty-two is one point six, and we did a one point six percent increase. And then for fiscal year twenty-three, eight point one was the index, and we implemented a five percent increase. Basically here to look for guidance on what you would like to implement for fiscal year twenty-four.
Right, before I open this up, so, so I think I've got two questions for, you know, is one point of, how much did that translate into actual money? So what's the difference between five percent and six percent in actual dollars?
I don't have that information in front of me. I'm happy to get that information for you. The, this is, so far, this, the guidance, so then I can spread this out and request that people increase so that I can take a look at that analysis for you.
So this is actually the kind of the second question. Some of us are, some of us are new, some of us always just need a quick reminder that when we give you kind of the range that we're looking for, what do you do with it after this?
Is the question after you recommend a range.
If, if we say five percent today, what actually, what actually happens?
If it's increased, what, what fees are we talking about?
So the master fees are a, master fees, they're a composite of all of the fees that are charged for, for the city. If you were to recommend any given percentage, what's going to happen is I would take that percentage and talk to the various departments to implement what you recommended. And then I would be coming back at a later time of a work session to show you the master fees and charges, a redlined version, which would show the old amounts as well as the new amounts and any new fees that are associated.
So they're going across the whole master, the whole master fee schedule, and effectively, it's a little bit more complicated than that, then he would add four or five percent of the cost to the fees across the board.
What fees?
Building fees, planning fees, this excludes the
More increase, planning fees, more?
All right, so other question, Jill?
So you're a staff member?
Yes, sir.
And so we, I think we have, or had, or do have a consultant that's looking at these, or that looking at something else.
Nick is helping with that, but yes, we are currently working with ESU. I think we're just finalizing the contract, it's IGA in a way with them. And they're going to be looking not just at what we charge, but how we charge the fees. So, you know, some kind of, there are big questions about methodology, but like a per acre fee for some, some fees versus flat fee. And so they're going to be looking and comparing to a couple of different agencies in our area and looking at across the board at our fees, and we'll come back to the council so that you can see that data. Look at the recommendation, and we'll also look at cost recovery, what other, what other agencies are doing for cost recovery, and how they'll apply to how we do business today under the new code.
So it appears, what I'm hearing though is we're kind of getting the cart before the horse. To me, before I, before I'm even comfortable making a decision to change any fee structure until we have somebody to look at it, third party look at it to see exactly where we sit, where, where the fairness scale is. And I would want to see, get some input from our developer community to see where they fit in this picture, because we can be themselves out to where we can, where, just nothing will pencil out, so we'll just effectively throw an anchor out to all future development, because we thought it was a good thing to do to raise those fees. However, we try to justify it. So I think I'm not comfortable moving forward with making any decision about these schedules until we get that, that thirty thousand foot view, and at least I would be more comfortable by saying, yeah, that, I've, I've got stuff in front of me that supports that decision. But just merely stating, stating what the CPI is, and what these, you know, things float around there, that's just, it's just not, it's not something I can grab. So I appreciate that. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I'm not comfortable moving forward with that.
My question is, how long would that study take? If we don't get it in time, we still might have to raise something in the meantime.
Our goal is to have a draft report back to them by the end of, middle end of April, so hopefully before the next fiscal year. To have a draft report, like I said, we're just currently signing, but it is a pretty quick turnaround, because they do have all of the information. It's just really taking our information and, and comparing that so that they can, they can get us that. The one thing I have a question on is, I think the concern I would have is there's more, we're not looking at all of the fees within the master fee schedule, and so I think that's where we're, we're strictly sticking with planning fees, and the master fees and charges schedule is very broad. I mean, it's business, business licensing fees, and so there still may be a question later about what, because we can set the fee based on the information we get out of the study, and maybe we are trued up to today's economics based on the information we have, so maybe it's not like we're going with a fee adjustment based on CPI. But I think there are other fees that won't be affected or won't be analyzed through that study that, that may still, that the council may still want to look at and address on a CPI basis.
So, so specifically, what's in scope? It's building fees, planning fees that are in scope for that study?
Yes, planning application fees, not building fees.
Like, I would be fine putting, like, putting the planning fees on hold until we get, get an answer back on, on what that study is. I think that makes sense, because we're, like, that study's going to recommend, I would assume it's going to recommend a lot of different adjustments.
Yeah, I think the council's going to have an option to look at methodologies and make some adjustments, and then set the fees to what today is versus just looking at a CPI and then discussion around what cost recovery they would like to look at.
Okay, so I think for the council, the, the question is, is everybody okay? They just sort of holding on the planning component of the master fee schedule until we get the market study back?
Well, I'm going to look at it too, while we're looking at it, look at it broadly to see. I've never been at the point of basing our fees based on CPI, because when the CPI goes up, then let's just raise our fees up, and it's like, what? We base our CPI from where, what, I mean, locally, or is it Portland, or is it, you know, where's the scale starting? And is that realistic for Springfield? And is our CPI in Springfield adjusting or changing at the rate of different areas in the state? Because I would think that there's going to be some difference. I don't know if you can nail that down, but I don't, I just don't like the cookie-clutter approach, but again, I can see how difficult it would be to try to figure out, okay, what is the best approach, so.
Well, and I think, just to, just to sort of extrapolate out this, because I think we're focusing sort of narrowly on, do we raise the fees or do we don't? But one of the things that you pointed out is, you know, falling behind in terms of just the economics of it. So I think it'd be helpful and not to create a lot of work, because it could just be like, here's the disaster of what happens if we don't. Like, if we don't raise the fees, or if we under whatever, then where is the, the funding going to come from? Or where the cost going to come from in other ways, or where are we going to pick that up? If it's going to come from, like, general fund and taxpayer money, that's going to offset whether or not, you know, we have developer fees or other things, and I think that's a conversation we should know, because it's not just a matter of do we or don't we, it's then how do we, how do we balance and do that cost recovery if we're not going to do it with fees for the services?
Okay, so I think we got a couple of things going on here, right? Like, this is all, did they warn you before you came in and presented that this is always everybody's favorite topic to get into? So I think we probably need to give, give some, like, again, I'm comfortable, like, let, let's wait on the plan, on the planning components of it. If we don't choose a number as far as guidance, right? We still have to let the staff kind of look at, you know, we, we could turn that into very easily and say, we're not going to choose a number, go back and still do the red line, the, the red line exercise, and look at what's, what's it actually costing, and recommend an adjustment without some sort of guidance that would give them some sort of direction and a chance to sort of go, okay, does this even make any sense, and justify it outside of the CPI. That's what we did before, you know, before a cost adjustment, but at least that would give them some sort of, we're not sort of waiting to get, you know, get all the document, documentation put together. We can say, okay, staff, if we're not going to choose a CPI, let's re, let's let you recommend fee adjustments on your own, and then write some sort of justification about what you're doing. Outside of the planning piece, because we're waiting on the planning piece. Go ahead.
And, and some, I, I hear definitely what you're saying as far as, and people keep using the word cost. And so that in itself is, okay, how do we figure cost? What is it costing the city or a person to build a house? And the only thing I can figure in my head is the staffing time it takes to push that through and to get that, that stick home built. There may be some outliers out there, but, you know, and I'm sure there is, but really, are, are we being upfront as to what the cost is? Because remember, it's like your average, is it fifteen hundred square foot home on a normal four thousand acre lot? Their permitting fees are now upward around of twenty-eight thousand dollars. Somewhere in that vicinity. And so I'm trying to figure out, okay. Where, where is it costing the city and towards the other entities reflecting for other. Entities, but. Where is, where is that cost? How's that cost the city that much for that lot? And. If we know that, then let's say. Our cost from this person, this person, this person, and then, then the developers turn around and say, oh yeah, oh, let me bring this up. What about that, that technology B? What have I gotten for that in the last, we've been collecting for twenty years? We haven't heard an update on that in, in, seems like a couple of years. And. So there's, they've got legit questions. And we should be able to say, what is it? What am I getting for this? Was it traffic study around fifty-eight and main, that behind? Dutch Bros. The traffic study or analysis alone would have cost almost two hundred thousand dollars somewhere in that vicinity for that to occur. Which killed that program, it would have been a great food hub. That killed it. And so. Who's shooting each other's foot? I mean, who's shooting? Those places where any place we build are income generators for the city. So are we retracting how? If we, if we get that thing built this year. And they're paying taxes starting this year into the next twenty years. But have that lot set for ten years because of our fees? How much will we have not collected? And how much would the city have been, been out? In income until someone finally moves in? That makes, I mean, try to collect your rent now, but if you got a tenant. As opposed to. Keeping things up so high where you can't find a tenant. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just. But that's, that's where I'm pretty clear where I stand. I've always, I've always said this and, and it's just something that. Anytime you're looking at, I mean. Right on that to where utilities are fifty dollars a month and. Fees. Just to have water and electricity that you don't use. Serial usage, fifty dollars.
Victoria?
Yeah, I have the. Saying exactly what I was thinking is that I. Just a fee for peace sake is really frustrating and, you know. A developer has a lot of costs anyway, and to, so to be able to understand or even just. A mom and pop or somebody who wants to. Build something. We have to, I need to understand what our building fees are and in comparison to our surrounding neighbors and are we. You know, preventing people from being able to do that because of the fee structure just for fee sake. So for me, I just really need to understand what those fees are. Before I could say, yeah, let's raise those. Cause I'm already, I already have a lot of heartburn over the planning fees. So adding this in is just sort of a whole thing. I, I just can't. Support that right now without more information.
I'm fine with going ahead with your suggestion of letting y'all, I would even be fine with seeing, you know, what's five, what's five percent look like? You know, in terms of raising it. Excluding the planning fees since folks have strong feels about that.
Like I, yeah, and I, and I think the planning fee thing is. It's, we don't wanna make the adjustment more than one time, right? Like we just literally gave them the information, like, like, let's get all the information back. So. I think if people are fine with that, we're waiting on the planning fees. Right? I think answer the question that says, okay, from a financial perspective. You know, like, what's one percent here, right? Because I don't know if this is bigger than a bread box, you know, if it's ten grand, you know, like from a. Across the whole city, that's not that much money, but if it's ten million dollars, right? That's something that the group should consider. And then again, I'm looking and seeing that I think that for the things that are not planning related. If you guys go back to the staff and sort of say, hey, look at them and then you recommend some sort of changes and, you know, out because costs are going up. From a city perspective and that's like, that's a reality. We gotta balance the budget, but if you recommend some sort of change with a justification. Then at least we can evaluate the red line from there. So people good with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, what's, I mean, just to find cost to me and, and show me. Show me that what's, you know, where's that money going? Is it beans? I like to use the term spent well, that is, is it being spent well, is it, is it the cost of whatever project they have? Is it directly relative to that project or are they funding? Or the library or for the, whatever. Just to build a house.
But we're waiting on that part because that's coming with the planning, with, with the planning fees.
Well, and I wanna, so I think we're also, I wanna make sure that we're not mixing because I hear a lot of different fees and so some of what I hear it could be. Related to S D Cs with, we're not looking at S D C methodology or S D C rate, which we would still be looking at a C P I adjustment. With. What construction costs are today.
Quickly looking at planning application.
I'm just saying, if somebody walks in and they say, I wanna, I need a building permit. I'm gonna build a house or I'm gonna build a garage or I'm gonna do something, that's the fee you're talking about.
We're not talking about.
See, that's what you're saying. You're not showing, you're saying in these fees, but then I say, what are the fees? And then you can't tell me what the fees are. You're saying with building and planning, well, I need to know what fees we're even talking about.
Talking about land use, land development, so application fees like site plan. Or a different section.
Okay, that's.
Studying building.
Okay.
So when you guys, when you guys come back, let's clarify what's in scope with, with, with the part we're waiting on so that everybody can like find out a recommendation. You know, from a staff perspective on, you know, so you can, we can actually see the fee, you know, you can say this is going up, this is going down, here's why. And then what over, what the overall impact is, and I will flag this one again because every time we come up with this conversation, can we please find? Twenty minutes on a work session schedule and talk about what the work programs specifically related to that technology fee is, that's always a sore point. Right? Like, and we like, we just need a repressur about what's there. What's, what's coming down the pipeline and why?
And who decides, who's deciding how it's been? Where's the decision making tree, so to speak?
Yes.
Yeah, what's the criteria has been?
Yeah, and every year we ask that same question. So, you know, you can get ahead of next year by, you know, coming back with the, with the technology. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilors. Appreciate it.
Thank you, welcome.
It's good having you.
Alright. That is it. I'm going to adjourn us and then we're gonna magically go into executive session in a different location, an undisclosed location. Well, it will be a couple of minutes so that people can clear out and she can open the next meeting. We're adjourned. Thank you.